And you're ready? I'd like to call the special board of, Board of Trustees to order. And if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. I'd like to welcome the three new members. Cronin and Wyland and Hardinger, just in order. Uh, yep, that's who they are, so I'll make sure I have my glasses on. And Rolco.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Feeny.
He said it'll be five to 10 minutes.
Okay. Hardinger.
Here.
Wyland.
Here.
Zagami.
Here.
Public comments? Anything from the public, anybody on social media? Nope. Uh, anybody from public comments? You're supposed to say it three times, so I'm not like losing it, so. Any from public comments? Hearing none? New business, Board Commission Committee Appointments? And, uh, my lack of organization. And on PTO last week. Let's see here. Um, you're gonna have to bear with my handwriting, but I did make, I made one individual for each one of you, and then I yellowed out your spots. And here. And then we also discussed, um, I talked to the administrator on combining, uh, some committees or commissions. With the thought of enhancing or increasing the production of staff. Yeah, just a few more. I gave me one. I don't know if you wanna. Um, I don't know.
I think if, I think if we're strict on combining, we still have to.
We have to get to that agenda?
I think Community Development Authority probably has to stay separate.
Yeah.
On Plan Commission.
Well, let's, let's save that for six.
Okay.
That's around five. So, um, let me just run through here what I have. I've got, uh, for a Community Development Authority, Hushang is Chair, Ermeling is Vice, and, um, fingers crossed, I've got Dave Deason in behind Gail Marshall. Uh, I am the Commissioner of Weeds. I still, normally the newcomers are the weeds and the fence, but, uh, I think Barb and I are gonna be able to handle all that, all those duties. Uh, CWE D R L F remains Keith Donner and Jessica Trowman. Uh, Everest Metro Joint Finance, um, I'll be on there along with Wyland and Hardinger. Hardinger or Hardingger?
Ger.
Ger? Like ger, like that? All right. Uh, Everest Metro Police Commission, um, Dave Eisenreich, I saw him last night, and, uh, he definitely wants to continue, so it'll be John Evans and Ryan Simmons and Dave Eisenreich. Uh, Extraterritorial Zoning Committee, uh, Roy Mumper in Steve Minell's spot. Getting a trustee beyond their gen.
No, it has to be.
It has to be since, oh, yeah, so then I've gotta.
It could be, yeah.
I gotta replace.
He was on there, it could, it could be there.
Who was?
It could be there.
Yeah, cuz.
Yeah, cuz Steve.
I saw Steve on there and I thought, okay, it must be okay.
It just has to be a Plan Commission member for us.
Okay, but I wanted to make sure, okay.
As long as it's, um, he's on the Plan Commission.
So, Roy replacing Steve Minell. Uh, Fence Viewers, um, it'll be a tandem joint force of Ermeling and Maloney. Uh, Finance Committee will be Hardinger and Wyland, uh, with fingers crossed again, Dave Deason. Uh, Dave and then Gao. Uh, Human Resources, Hardinger or Wayland. Uh, Fred Schuster, Linda Hackarth, we have one open yet, and, um, I, I think I might have that filled, but, uh, we'll have to wait on that. Uh, Metro Planning Organization remains the same. Medevco remains the same. Park and Rec is Barb Ermeling as Chair and Feeny as Vice Chair. And Katrina Clark, Roger Isker and Dino Corvino, and wait a minute. Dino Corvino, okay, that's coming down. Uh, Planning Commission is Steve Cronin Chair, uh, Maloney and Zagami both in, in there, cuz we had Steve Minell, we had Lauren White and myself. Um, and, uh, Steve Cronin is moving into the trustee position, and, uh, I'm putting up Jim Pinesel as a citizen member. Gary Garn, I do not have an alternate one or alternate two at this point. Uh, Parks, uh, Public Works and Utility, Hushang Zagami remains Chair, and, uh, I'll jump in that one since I'm here for planning. As Vice Chair and Tom, Roy and Louis as citizens. Safer Board of Directors, uh, Steve Cronin replacing Lauren White, myself, still in there. Safer Fire Commission, Scott Tetrel, uh, wants to still be on, and so does Gene Jackin. Tourism Committee, Commission. Uh, Hardinger, Hardinger, Wyland, Dino Corvino, I put in there, and, uh, Dave Gemwell, and then John Cleaver still as, uh, citizen, or excuse me, as hotel rep. Zorning Board of Appeals? I didn't do anything with that.
Usually.
I don't think they met for like eight or nine years, but.
No, they haven't met for a while because of the new.
I am gonna make phone calls on that, and along with some other ones.
Yeah, usually you pick ex-Plan Commission members.
Right, oh, okay.
Because they understand the.
Okay, that's a good point, all right. Uh, at this point, Lauren, um, wants to take a break, but, um, I'm gonna reach out, I'm gonna reach out to him again. Do I do, uh, Vice President now, or is that a separate vote? I thought it was a separate vote at one time.
Isn't that something that the Board.
Does together.
Together, huh?
Yep, well, I'm, I'm putting up Barb again, and, um, part of the reasoning is, the Vice Chair is a si- signature trustee if I'm not available, and then it's the, um, most tenured trustee runs the meetings, and that would be Barb, hands down, anybody here, so. I, I'm not saying just because, but I'm just saying, it makes the most sense. Let's see, CBB, uh, it was requested by Yi. Uh, he is gonna be the, uh, member at large for all these communities. Still on the CBB, but he asked me if I would put Hushang Zagami on there, and I think that's a good idea. They've got some building projects, so note that Nate Feeny is here. Um, they got some building projects, and Yi and Tim White both asked if Hushang could be on there, so I'm putting him up for that. And then, um, what do you call this, this group down here? It is Weston, DC Everest, County.
Joint Review Board.
Which one?
Joint Review Board, I think.
And I don't, I don't think that's ever been on here. Is that customarily the president, I think? Barb, you've been on there since you were the president.
That is.
Right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Only you meet for the TIF type thing.
Right, right, it doesn't meet often, but in fact Barb just met, I think, twice, right? You had two meetings.
They'll have, they'll have to meet in July.
Yeah, I would say once a year you.
They have to, you know, yearly now.
So, I am switching, I don't think we've missed anything else. I think there was some stuff that I saw on the website that had our past administrator on there that I think has cleaned up. I, we, I would like to entertain, and we can talk about this under six, uh, three different crosses, and, um.
You have a, a board member and also a citizen on the Joint Review Board.
Yeah.
This is down here?
So you'll have to offer up, the Joint Review Board has to actually vote on it, but we have to give them a specific person.
Oh, a name?
And that gets voted on at their meeting.
Okay.
Bob doesn't wanna do it, we'll have.
Oh, Bob is on here too?
Bob Bender was our citizen member.
Ah, I didn't know that, okay, okay. Well, all right, then when do we have to have that done? By next meeting?
Are you doing it in June? When are you gonna?
June, July.
Okay.
They just have to give an annual report, it's, it's just a small meeting.
So we have to get another citizen member on there, okay. Um, questions? Concerns, critiques, attacks, thoughts? I apologize, it's in written form.
I said that'll be different, I hadn't been off the finance.
Huh? I know, well, I think you were, the, when I first came on, you took yourself off as president.
Yes, and I need you.
And you put me on, and I, I kinda actually called you and said, what are you doing? You know, so, and I didn't know Jessica that well, so I didn't wanna be too intimidated. But then I got to work pretty well, and I felt pretty good. Oh, you were vice? I, I don't think you were vice.
No, I was, uh, what do you, um, I came to him that day.
Yeah, you still came, yeah, and I, I come to all the meetings too, it seems. Oh, I don't come to Parks, and I, I should come to Parks more often. Was the, uh, was the goal to give everybody at least two? Um, nope. Okay, was that?
No.
Hmm.
And in the past, we've kinda divided.
Yep. I, um, I, um, if, if, if the question comes, uh, it'll be on performance, it'll be on, uh, attendance, uh, that was definitely thoughtful. So what, do we offer it up? I can't, we do this once a year, I can never remember how this happens. Just like, uh, just like anything else, uh, make a motion. A motion, okay. So we'll need a, whatever your pleasure is, a motion to either accept or deny, and then a second, and then a vote.
I move to accept the Board Commission and Committee Appointments as outlined.
I have a motion by Cronin, second, second by Feeny. Anything more on the question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, does that also cover Vice President, or is that a separate meeting?
We can make, it's a sec, it's a separate line item on the end, so we can do that.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Ah, I just would, uh, yeah, let's, let's just do seven right away. I move to approve Barbara, uh, Barbara Ermeling as Village Vice President.
Fuck.
A motion by Feeny, second by Zagami. Any more on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, let's go back to six, discussion and possible action on merging committees and/or commissions. Just hearing a lot of scuttlebutt, um, good and bad, um, from, you know, the school board, doesn't really have any committee or commissions much anymore, talk to Yi and several others. The County Board is, uh, also a little lacking on that too, like I spit my gum out, sorry. My wife says I chew like a cow, and I'm sure I do. I would, I didn't look at the camera, you can edit that, right? No, I guess you can't. Anyway, um, um, but on my thought, um, I'm thinking, you know, for better production, to not have staff continuously putting agendas together, you know, researching for stuff, um, we used to have the two board meetings a month several years ago, and then we went to one. You know, we can certainly do special meetings. Um, and then I would like to still have the same thought that we would keep the first, the fourth, and the possible fifth weeks open, and try to have our activity in the second and third weeks. And that's kinda currently right now with a heavy amount of them. I think last night we had Park and Rec. Is that a random, uh, schedule, or they just had to fit it in, or is that normal?
Almost always the last.
It is, okay.
Try to keep that one, yeah, the first Monday kinda set aside for Human Resources if needed.
Okay.
So it's kind of as needed, it's not necessarily always happening.
Okay. Well, and then if we can combine some of these, I, I think we should. Um, and if we could somehow get to, so the Park and Rec being at the end, you said? Is there a reason for that, or no? And Human Resources is really not a reason. You, you try to park some of that in front of BOT just to get approval in the same timeframe, correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's gonna, it works out, I suppose it works out similar either way.
Hmm.
Whichever, um.
You know, I mean, planning.
The first Monday of the month, you know, it ends up, it'll end up going to the next meeting that month, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, Parks, I'm gonna, I'm gonna the board.
Yeah, I mean, um, but it would be best to have the BOT always last, just as cleanup, you know, for any of the stuff ahead of time. So if we could get Parks head somehow, I think we should try. I think, I think Nate said, when I had first verbally talked about this, putting Parks with Public Works might be a long meeting. I, I'm not too sure about that, I, I don't know any other fits though, other than what I see here, I mean, tourism and finance, I, I know one's a commission and one's a committee, and, and if we have to leave it that way, we have to leave it that way. We probably have, what, four touristms a year maybe? Maybe four or five?
Well, and they run the meeting together, but I think the Tourism Commission actually is a kind of a separate.
Well, and, and I, Keith was talking about that too.
And their decisions are their decisions.
Right, it's also about collecting. I think it's something to do with collecting, if we weren't with the CBB. Did, did we not put that together when we kinda jumped away from the CBB, right?
Yes.
So it's kind of a protection for the village, to be able to collect the hotels, you know, uh, fees and keep it here versus having to always be with another group.
I think it's, it's required, I'm not sure.
Um, is it?
Well, I think we don't, we don't have the commission.
No, we can't collect the. No, no, we can collect. Jessica, I, I just see her.
The village collects, it's the village's responsibility.
Regardless.
And Matt Edie, when he did the research, our commission doesn't actually qualify as
Yeah, that's what I thought.
A tourism entity through the state statutes. We need to join the CBB or some other entity for tourism.
Okay, so regardless, yeah.
But this is an oversight where it's, it's dealing. As I recall, we can, we, our decision does not necessarily go back to the board.
And, and, and I made that comment at the last meeting, you know, thinking that we either do it or save it, and then I think you and both Bob said, no, it stays here. And, yeah, and I, and I remembered that, I just, uh, I was just thinking aloud.
I mean, it is sort of combined, cuz we meet up in front, we always met in front of the Finance Committee.
But Finance does not approve tourism, correct? It doesn't, Finance does not approve tourism, tourism stands alone.
Right.
Okay. Where the Commission of, the Plan Commission, except for, uh, this last amendment, it stood alone. It, it, the Board did not have to approve that, right? Remember, we talked about that? I think a lot of us thought it, it had to go through the Board, and the Board could maybe correct it or change it, but actually the Plan Commission had the authority to bring that amendment up and, and accept it.
They had the first responsibility, the first authority on adopting that amendment, proposed amendment. I guess the Board theoretically could then have also said, okay, we're gonna have to go forward with it, but it was not, it had to be approved by the Plan Commission first.
Yeah, okay. So.
What about the Park and Public Works? Because Public Works, they do all the Park work anyway.
You know, and, and that's what I'm thinking, you know, sometimes I think that, um, Parks doesn't get, uh, you know, the respect, the moxie that it deserves, and you're right, and it is dovetailed with Public Works. Um, I don't know how we would join that, I mean, would we actually lose members? Would we take the committee to a seven? Would that make more sense? You'd still lose a few members.
I think the member they have is pretty good.
Yeah.
There's, you know, a lot of experience there, and they contribute a lot.
And then we would have to, uh, back out two trustees, right? Would, cuz you wouldn't have them together, you'd have one group. So you'd have Public Works, Park and Rec, all as one, yeah. And then you'd have, uh, Michael and Sean, you guys get along pretty good, right?
Sure, yeah.
There you go.
Do it all at the time anyway.
Yeah, well, I mean, being the, the Board meetings, everyone's together anyway, with all the different commissions and committees, so. I, I can't imagine, and, and like you say, it all kinda runs together, so.
And there has been times, you know, with the way the meetings are, that Sean has brought, you know, an equipment purchase or something like that to Public Works, just because of how the meetings fell with.
Right.
The trustees and the following.
So is this, I mean, so is that one clear enough that we could actually do tonight? I, I don't think we can do tourism without looking at it a little bit longer. And then probably the CDA, I think you said something that we have some debt with the CDA, and we can't bring that debt to the Plan.
CDA is actually a separate entity.
Yep, which hasn't met in probably over a year and a half.
What are their roles and responsibilities at the CDA versus Plan Commission? I mean.
CDA used to be have Marseille and the light, okay, right?
Okay.
The past prior to, um, when they were created, their role is to issue debt. They issue the CDA revenue bonds. The Board cannot, the CDA is responsible for that.
Okay. So do we have a clear path on putting the CDA in, not with the debt, right? We can't, right?
Right.
Okay.
CDA has to stand as it.
It has to?
It has to stay where it is.
Because of the debt?
Yes.
If we cleared a debt, which is how much?
Uh, about 14 million.
Oh, that might be a little topsy-dove. 14 million. So Tourism, I think we have to do more research there on what we actually need or don't have to have, whatever. Obviously, the CDA is gonna have to stand alone. I mean, planning, the Plan Commission is very, can be very lengthy at times.
Just one more question, does the CDA, can the CDA be made up of the same members as the Plan Commission? Or does it have to be separate? I mean, for as much as they meet, could, could you dovetail it into a planning meeting? If, if you had, I mean, I'm just trying to simplify things a little bit.
Well, I, I would definitely wanna take two out of CDA and bring them over to, uh, alternate one and two. And if they're citizen members, then they at least get paid. You know, I mean, not that we get paid for any of the stuff we do other than our, our monthly, but Hushang and I came to all the alternate stuff just to stay up to speed, and it was a whole other meeting, and we didn't get the vote, so, not often anyway, so.
Well, you probably wanna look into what the makeup of it can be, I don't know that it matters. Probably could be the same individuals, I don't know. Just trying to, uh.
Yeah, so one of the functions of the CDA is like a housing, community development authority. It's, that's what it's called in the statutes, it's housing and community development.
Right, but we did pull some of the duties and bring it to planning, right?
Yeah, so at one point, they actually were in charge of the TIF.
Okay.
And then it went back to the Plan Commission.
Okay.
And we had it, when we brought up looking at doing some housing authority type, you know, creating one, um, the Board didn't wanna do it at that time. Um, it does kinda talk about the makeup of what they should be. We'd have to look in some more.
Does, does somebody see a different combination than these? Does somebody see Human Resource maybe with something else? I, I mean, uh, I, I mean, you know, only, well, I just don't think it, it belongs with money. I mean, I know it's about money, I know it's insurance, and I know it's wages, but I think it should stand alone.
It would be helpful going forward.
What?
To have Parks and Rec with Public Works on the same night as Planning, just because of some of the planning things that we need to do.
I agree.
And there should be kind of someone, at one point, we had somebody from, that was on the Parks Committee that was also on Planning, because one of the roles of the Plan Commission is to do park planning and things like that, so.
Well, and, and I, I, I think, I, I think I remember that, and what I tried to do a little bit, that I tried to not put somebody on the second or third week, and then again on the next week. You know, so if you're on Planning, you might as well jump into Public Works, you know what I mean? Kind of thing, so, like Roy Mumper's, when I had called him, I said, you might as well do both. You know, if you're gonna be here for one, you might as well just kinda go right into the next one. And, um.
So you're suggesting putting, putting Parks, uh, Public Works and Planning all on the same night?
Same night.
Well, right now, Public Works and Planning is on the same.
Correct.
But you would combine.
I just know the, the Public Works meeting already runs long.
Yeah.
And then if we dovetail, you know, Parks into that.
Yeah, but it, it, it definitely brings more relevance to Park and Rec. I agree, and there's.
I think hour and a half wouldn't be enough, I'm sorry. Hour and a half wouldn't be enough for that meeting?
Would not?
No.
Okay.
Because if we have a park business, although park meetings are usually short unless you got some, a specific project, but right now, we kind of are rushed through Public Works to make sure we meet that hour and a half.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think we should do that, I, I think, you know what? Maybe we push it, Planning a little later, not, not actually schedule it, but still have six, but if it goes later, and then it might get some of the story out of us in Planning and get that thing done quicker.
Well, the only.
You start later, you're gonna get, you're gonna move it along, you know?
The only problem with Planning is because we have public hearings.
Right.
We have to give a time for people.
Right.
So that's why it's always been, well, we actually put six or as soon as.
Yeah, I would leave six, I would leave it six, but if it's 6:30, quarter to seven, it is what it is. You know? Um, we could always try it and change it. I think 4:30 is early enough, though, I think it's hard for a few of us. But, uh, I, I would encourage that, I think the other two, we have some homework to do, to look at. I mean, um, can we move Commissioner of Weeds with the Fence Viewers? Can we combine those two? Of course, that's just humor, so, I mean, somebody, please, at least smile, my God.
You know what, yeah, you could try, instead of changing the ordinance right away, you could just have joint meetings for a while, Parks and Public Works. Well, that complicates the thing, but.
Does Park get to go first, PA versus PU? They're gonna be changing all their wording just to get, you know, the alphabet to A, you know? I, I, I would go along with that. Then we don't have to do all kinds of crazy stuff, I would just put Parks there and see what happens. Maybe a little coin toss for a little excitement, to see who will first.
Parks meetings typically go.
Well, first of all, Parks meetings are what? Four or five a year, right now? I don't think they're every month.
Oh, I mean, last night we had, what, hour and a half meeting?
Okay, yeah, but I mean, uh, if we looked at the schedule, you know, just like looking at Human Resource, there's, there's not a, there's not as many as 12 every year, I don't think. Um, you know, Sean kinda stops some, a little bit in the wintertime, and then I'm sure summertime is a little bit more wild, or spring especially, so.
Sean is on line, I do believe.
Sean, any thoughts on this? You're muted.
Nope, right now, we're doing meetings as we need them.
Right.
Sometimes it doesn't.
Yeah, and then you don't, and that's fine if, if you don't, but I, I think he's got a good idea. I don't know what everybody else thinks, you know, so.
Yeah, I'd be, I'm fine with, uh, merging, with, uh, merging Parks and Rec with Public Works. It just makes more sense, and it's hopefully, uh, a little bit less staff work and a little less, uh, confusion on some jurisdictional issues.
You know, maybe, um, Parks can't start as early, uh, and maybe Public Works can start a half an hour early, I don't know. I'm just trying to think of the members on, uh, Public Works.
Or if we combine them, do we, do we get Planning Commission at 6:30 or 7 o'clock starting?
I, I think, and I thought that they could get done early, cuz if we are 6:30 or 7, we can't start if you publish at time, and you're done early.
No, I got you.
So I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather have Planning wait, and then have the possibility that it could get done early, and then you could start, you know? Cuz once you publish that, you can't start until then, so.
I mean, I'd almost say we, i- if we are combining Public Works and Parks, maybe say 6:30, just cuz, I mean.
I think a little bit more, a little bit more time, we're already running late, that's the only reason.
That's all speculation, but I'm, the first time I've gotta sit here for a half an hour and wait, and we're like, oh, I wish we would've left it at six, you know? So do you wanna have the, the planning people think that they're late? Or sit here and idle for a half an hour? Can, I mean, can you imagine how ridiculous that sounds? Only in government would you have to sit here because it's a gender.
Well, that's if we, we keep them separate, right?
Uh, correct, yeah.
So if we do combine them, then if we put them at the same time, and they have that agenda together, if they only meet a couple times a year, then really early looking at a couple times a year where it's actually gonna make that meeting perhaps a little longer.
Yeah, but are you advocating putting Planning, the whole thing starts at 4:30?
No, no.
I, I know, but that, would that, would get us out of trouble?
We could do a joint meeting agenda, Parks and Public Works.
And Planning, and then it doesn't matter when we start or stop. Oh.
Yeah.
Why couldn't, could you, uh?
My agendas get nasty sometimes.
Could you rearrange your agenda to put public hearings?
I, well, I could do, I thought about doing the agendas completely separate for the hearings. Just to have it so that people kind of understand the difference between the hearings and just the regular work. I've seen that before.
We can leave it at six and see how it goes.
Yeah, maybe give it, give it a try for a few weeks and then see what happens and if we're running late all the time.
Or month.
That's what I meant, a couple months.
For what, uh, we start public for fifteen hours, haven't we?
Okay. Yeah. Do you, I, I just don't know what all the members, you know, I, I think it's okay. It's fine for me. Is it okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, I, I just, I, I think Roy's okay. Um, cuz I thought he said when I first called him, four o'clock.
I think Tom is the only one.
Oh, Tom would be the only one?
Yeah.
That might be a little late, okay.
Yeah. Tom usually just has issues in the summer due to his job and he's usually. Working in other municipalities.
Okay. And Louis, um, he's on Wassa TV.
Correct, yeah.
Um, I think he's a canine trainer and animal, right?
Think so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Do we need a motion? Or actually, no, we're not changing nothing. Or just putting the dates, combining the dates, right, for times?
Or do we have the dates noted? Ordinance of all the week?
I think when you make the agenda or make the agenda for Public Work. Even if there's no business for Park, still they should pass the part in there and make those comment. Then we can talk about it and just move on.
That's a good point. It's, it's what we do on the BOT every month. We have that little attorney referral. If anybody has any questions or they wanna bring it to the board. You know, you or any, anybody wants to go to the attorney. Instead of having everybody just scattered on it, just trying to control the cost. I think that's a good point, just to have it parked right in there. It's a couple seconds of wording if it's not there. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? Do we not? Is, is it just something we can schedule as a joint?
No, we should just be able to schedule it, uh, as a joint. That's what I think, but.
That's what you want, I guess that.
Well, there's a whole lot of things I want.
The emotion makes it a little more clear to the staff that that's what you want, so I guess that would be fine if you did that.
So do a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, Sean's okay with that. Sean, you okay with that?
Yep, that's fine.
All right. We're not, we're not so wild that we can't change it if something doesn't work.
I'll move the, hold the combined meeting for Public Work and Park.
Motion by Zagami, second, second by Feeny. Any more on the discussion? Does that include the four fifteen start?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have to do anything with that? Is that what you kinda meant? I just didn't hear it maybe correctly?
No, I didn't say it.
I gave it out, okay.
All right, given, uh, just, just to point on the start time, given that Parks and Rec is my only committee. Uh, I won't be able to be there until four forty-five due to work.
Okay, well, then, that's cuz he was talking about starting Public first. So then, and then Park would be good after that.
Just, yeah.
Okay.
Eliminating confusion.
Okay. Any more in the question? Any more in the discussion? Harry, none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, hey, one down, two more to go. So the other two, I think we have homework on, correct?
Do you wanna talk about number four?
Uh, number four.
Number four.
That skipped over.
Oh.
Move to acknowledge March budget status, uh, reports.
Actually, I was, this was a, uh.
If nobody seconds it, it drops, yeah, so then we can.
Right, and this, this is just acknowledgement, not.
Oh, okay, yeah. That's all it is, but it actually wasn't acknowledged already.
I was, it was put in here as an example for request from, uh, trustee Hertiger. As far as, uh, financial reporting.
So, as, like an executive, you know, sheet, you know, I, I am used to a page, uh, and not a whole bunch. And I get a little lost on, on numbers and I will readily admit it. So, what did you have in mind with that request?
Well, uh, Jessica, you, you're the one that put this together, right?
It's actually done every month, right? I think, kinda.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to say thank you for getting it together. I, I started looking through it and everything and, um. I think one of the biggest things on a broad stroke is just to see where the money coming in and money's going out. So I apologize, I haven't got a chance to completely go, go through it yet, but, um, it looks really comprehensive, so. That's something I'm, I'm gonna have to circle back to you on.
Okay.
So you can sink your teeth in for, until next, okay, good. Okay. Does that satisfy four for everybody?
I think the first two, she got the asset and she got the balance sheet and everything is there, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. I think those first two, I mean, it's very well, it's laid out and easy to read for everyone, so I still don't have a degree in finance.
Okay.
Motion was drawn.
Okay. Uh, so now we're going back to, um, seven we did, eight. Uh, consideration of bid results for implementation of temporary PFAS treatment equipment for well, number four, action on bids.
So, this is probably a lot to fill that three new members of the board. But, uh, you know, the PFAS thing has raised its head in the, uh, state. Cause of, um, the lack of a Safe Drinking Water Act maximum containment level. And then all the states have kinda gone off on their own. Wisconsin had recommended a. Twenty parts per trillion level, but the Natural Resources Board said no, we should make it seventy. Just as the EPA has recommended it be. So you've been hearing the news in Wassa about, you know, they're trying to reach a twenty parts per trillion. Uh, we're also struggling with the, uh, Wisconsin Department of Health Services. Health advisory standard of twenty parts per trillion. So they're saying that when we exceed twenty parts per trillion. Or a hazard index of one, which Michael can probably explain a little bit how they come up with that. We're supposed to issue this health advisory notice, so we were in the spot of having to issue that health advisory notice or turn off. Well three, well four, back here, which we have done. And, um, and then we, um, resampled. And, uh, on Friday, we learned that. The PFAS levels are now below twenty. They're now back down to the levels they were in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen. The DNR is not quite sure if they believe this or not, so we are gonna be re-sampling that well again.
For a third time?
Yes. At the DNR's, from the DNR's sampling.
That's well four?
That's well four.
Three and four.
Three and four.
And four is located right behind here. And three is over.
And three is where?
By the, um, Public Safety Building.
Oh, just down on Meskier here.
Yeah.
By Old Castle last.
Yeah, no, the, um, the third sampling is paid for by the DNR.
Okay. Wow, that's unusual.
Yeah.
Well, they were gonna pay for this upcoming round of sampling anyway, cuz. Utilities weren't taking them up on testing unless they were gonna get some, oh, doing it, so, anyway.
For our first test, we were over, and our second one, we were under. And now we're gonna do a third one.
To hopefully verify whether the.
Hopefully the second one was right.
Second one was right.
So will this also encourage, uh, other municipalities do the same thing?
Probably.
I think.
That if the result come out, it's okay. It's still gonna be a question why we had that high reading. What's the reason for that?
Yeah, and that's.
It better clear that because when you come back and hunt us, if you have another sample, it's a high result.
Yep.
So, we can't just let it go. First of all, we cut all the argument off of it, but.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, so that's a new wrinkle that we didn't know in this one, together for the packet on, uh, Friday. So, um, Thursday, whatever day it was, anyway. So I, I'm not sure we're looking for any action tonight, just to understand what the.
Yeah, I mean, we, we did still have a, um, a temporary treatment, um, bid opening yesterday. We received, uh, one, one company provided a proposal for that. Uh, that was a water surplus and, um, their fee would be a hundred and nine thousand, seven fifty-two. To get something put in the treatment plant for PFAS removal. And. So, uh, I guess we have a number, um, we don't need to award it. You know, we have sixty days from, uh, the bid, bids being received before we, uh, while they're still good in that sixty day window. So I guess, at this point, we. My suggestion would be we wait until we get our third samples back, cuz if we don't need to do anything, I suggest we don't need, we don't do anything.
When is the ET on that?
We should be getting the sample bottles, I believe, next week from the DNR. And then it usually takes about two weeks from the time you send it into the lab to get results.
And, and reading some of the information you guys had out for us, one of the options is just declaring an issue, right?
And we can do that too, um, you know, it's where, like, I think Keith said, Wassa and Rothschild are in that spot and then, you know, you have people say.
It's a Rothschild thing.
Yep, and that's what Wassa, Wassa is in that spot too, cuz.
Wassa is also furnishing something. I mean, what, gallons do you go fill up or what, what are they doing?
Yeah, I think they're getting out pitchers, um, like filters, um, and then, and also bottled water. So I guess that, that would be another thing then we would have to decide is do we. If we issue that warning out there, do we then have?
An obligation.
An obligation to.
So, in rolling, we're talking about what, seven percent of the water? Because the rest is down the toilet, showering, I mean, other than drinking or cooking. You know, so.
What was, what's our PPT on the first reading? If memory serves me right, it was just over twenty? Uh, well, Sternberg was actually only at, uh, or the well four was at seventeen, but had a hazard index over, um, over one. And, uh, well three. Second here.
Well, three and four are somewhat close.
Yeah, they're about a half a mile apart.
Yeah, if, I mean, yeah, even, wow, I don't wanna say closer than, as the, as a bird flies or crow flies.
Yeah.
So, so did, did three?
Yep. Yeah, so.
When you get, when we tested them a second time?
No.
Yeah, yeah, they both did. So the first time, well three was at thirty-eight point seven with a hazard index of two point seven five. And well four was at seventeen point seven nine with a hazard index of one point three five.
Okay.
Then, um, the latest results that we got.
Well, wait a minute, seventeen?
But, but it had a hazard index over one.
Oh, okay, all right.
So then our latest results are, well three is at ten point eight seven, or hazard index of point seven. And well four is at seven point two four, um, with a hazard index of point four five. So, they, they improved dramatically.
And why is that? What was done in the meantime?
The, the wells were turned off, so I guess one of the questions the DNR has is, because they were off, did. You know, did the, was there a change in the groundwater flow, um?
So we tested them, them the second time off?
Well, we, we, we pumped them for about half an hour, which is.
To get flow.
To get flow and make sure we cleared out and hopefully we're, you know, pulling from the same aquifer we would, you know, they're running, so. So that, that's their only thought is maybe we didn't, they didn't run long enough, so that's where they've told us to. Put them back online, um, run them and then re-sample and see if that was a difference or not. So I, I understand that, um, the blending, uh, proposal would. Probably, uh, lower the, uh, parts per trillion, would that also lower the hazard index as well? Yeah, I mean, it, it, you'd essentially take, you know, water that meets the requirement and put it with water that maybe is slightly over. And your end result is.
Safe water.
Water that's under, you know, it's the old, uh, the solution to pollution is dilution, um, method, I guess.
Are wells three and four running now, currently?
Uh, not yet, uh, we had moved the chemicals and things like that out of the wellhouses since they're off.
Okay.
So, um.
Why would we do that? Why? Why move the chemicals out?
So we didn't have to buy more.
Okay.
You know, we moved, we moved it to other wells.
So it's, 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 it's that often that we're buying chemi-
Usually about once a month, um, so we, so we got everything moved back and then, uh, we needed to take, make sure we got a safe sample. From the wells before we could turn them back online, so.
So.
Probably tomorrow.
Just off, off the cuff here, so we're buying chemicals. Rothschild's buying chemicals, everybody's buying chemicals. Is there a discount, you know, that we should all be buying them together?
We all kinda use the same people.
Some getting bulked, some getting drums.
But the discussion, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know.
It is a thing that comes up periodically.
You know, it's like, uh, snowplow trucks, uh, you know, police cars, shovels, you know? I mean, if we're buying chemicals, I mean, uh, three communities are buying what we're buying or two of them.
Yeah, and, and some of the chemicals aren't all the same, you know, based on your water, um, it, it might vary based on.
Who makes, you know, who makes that change as far as what chemicals use? Us? Or is it a recommendation from the chemical company or?
It depends on what you're trying to treat, but usually, you know, you go through the DNR, if you're gonna.
So everything we do as far as treating is done with the DNR's approval. We, we don't make those calls here.
We can't really just change what we're providing the public without the DNR. So, based on, uh, based on the most recent estimate and whatever model or projection you guys have. We believe that we're going to be under twenty parts per trillion for the third one? Yeah, I mean, you know, we, like I said, we did the. We, we had sampling done in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen that showed all of our wells were fine. You know, I think Keith and I and, you know, Josh Swanson, our utility superintendent, were. Kinda surprised when the first set of samples came back with those two wells over. And, and realistically, the second set looked a lot similar to what it was in fourteen and fifteen. So, um, again, I'm not sure what, maybe what, you know, the third, the third set is really what, you know, we need to be able to confidently say yes, that's.
And these bottles, these, uh, sample bottles we get from the DNR are, you know, packaged.
Yep, they're prepackaged, they're airtight, you know, when you, you open it, you fill it up, you close it.
Are they reusable or are they a one and done?
They're one and done.
Is there a made on sticker on these sample bottles?
I probably.
I just thought it was wild when, um, uh, our federal government, uh, did all these sample kits for COVID. And I, I, I just did it just for the hell of it. I, I told everybody I knew to get them. And then when I got my package, made in China, I was just shocked. And I'm thinking, okay, yeah, there you go. So, I'm just wondering where the bottles come from, so, that's all.
I'd have to look.
Is that, is that a hundred and nine thousand dollars? Is that a one-time fee or does that, or is that our startup fee and then. We're paying an X amount of dollars a month to rent that unit or?
Yeah, so a hundred and nine thousand is the initial setup fee and then it was, I think, five thousand a month for renting it.
Does that one hundred and nine thousand include X amount of months in the initial price or no?
I'd have to look through, I, I, I guess I didn't study it that much after. I, I did.
I could start to ask. One more on the aquifers.
Yep.
Okay, so, we can identify where they are, areas of, of aqua, to some degree?
Generally.
Okay, and, and are they all that different or does ours dovetail into Schofield and Rothschild and Wassa or? I mean, cuz Rhinelanders several years ago, it was first reported and it was an, an absolute, I mean, critical. And I, I just remember the, the culprit was the foam from airports that they use for firefighting. Now you go in and you, you get more, I mean, you, it's vortex, it's from this, it's, it's, uh. Uh, raincoats, it's, you know, it's, uh, sealants on cotton automobiles.
That's your Scotch guards.
Scotch guard, I mean, it's everywhere. And to Keith's point, you know, when we first started talking about it, it's been around for forty years. And, uh, you know, it's just, we're able to test, I mean, you know, forty years ago, people used to just die. God, God forbid somebody die and we don't realize why they die, you know, so. We just test the living heck out of this until we figure out what's all going on with water and all this stuff. I'm just making.
People used to die from, uh, cholera and typhoid within days of drinking bad water. We're, we're beyond that anymore. Now we're worried about chronic health effects. So, you know, it's a whole different thing.
Eat more vegetables. That's a conflict I saw, I'm sorry.
Michael, who's doing the water sample?
When is it? When is the third test?
It's when we would get the samples from the DNR, I believe it's the. They're gonna be sending us the bottles, I believe, later next week, so we'll probably get them. Is it the week of May ninth?
Can you just humor me a little bit?
Sure.
And somebody look at them and see where they're made?
Yeah.
Please, I, I would just love to know. I just think it'd be, uh. A, a little tidbit of information I'd like to know.
Our staff samples the.
Who's that?
You know, John Borth, our utility super, or, uh, utility foreman.
Procedure very good and.
Yeah.
Everything is according to the way they wanted to.
I, I would, uh, if I review everyone here, I would make a point to have more people there. It's a big deal.
Yep.
And just, just to make sure that it's done right, that there's, you know.
I reviewed the procedure.
I, I'm, I make mistakes all the time, so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the interesting part is between the first sample and the second sample. You know, we have six wells we sampled, four of them essentially were, were the same the first time around and the second time around, so.
Same individual, all six wells twice? Or not? That'd be another thing.
I, I believe so, uh, but.
I would actually log that. I would actually have that logged. I mean, this is, this is a pretty big, hundred, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, once we get the.
So, once we get the results of the third sam, uh, the third sample, in addition to, uh, whether or not Wayne wants to, uh, send out a press release or something, we absolutely have to send out some sort of letter to our, uh, to our citizens, residents and customers, just to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, uh, to inform everyone as much as possible. And if need, and if, um, we need to take some sort of treatment action, the, the blending without a doubt is the cheapest and we should go that route, um, if possible. Just reading the questions, uh, uh, the questions at the end of the request for consideration.
Sure.
Any other thoughts?
Maybe else want to weigh in? Wish I had?
I don't think a hundred and nine thousand is, I don't know, really out of the question for a treatment plan either though.
That's a temporary, that's just a temporary.
Right, yeah, I mean, we'd look at, um, and it's, there's an option to purchase the equipment later, which we would, um, repurpose for iron manganese removal. Probably for wells one and five, so.
Currently, at, at the last meeting, we have six current wells now.
Correct.
And, and we're in the process, we, we just approved six and seven.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight.
To your point, the issue I see with option number two is there's, it may reduce fire flow capacity and, you know, God forbid we have something huge that happens in the village during that time, I would hate to see us.
That true?
Not effectively be able to fight something because.
So, so that's one thing that's being modeled, um.
Okay.
Is it, it, what kind of impact it would have on fire flows, um, you know, when you start.
Fire flows, uh, tempered by the towers?
Yeah, but if we have valves closed, that means instead of water being able to kind of free flow in the system, we're telling it, you know, you can't, you know, at this T, you can only go this way, and we're not letting the water go back maybe to the right, so, um.
That was kind of my question last night.
They could change the pipes for ten thousand in total and cost, sound like?
Yeah, so, so to do that, we would have to re-pipe, um, how do I want to explain this? Uh, so right now, the, the piping goes from the wells to the treatment plant, we'd have to add in a section of pipe that would take the water from the system into the treatment plant, so it could blend then with the well as it pumps into the treatment plant.
And for everybody's information, the treatment plant is where?
Right, right behind here. Yeah, so right now, the, there's two lines that enter the treatment plant and it's from wells three and four. So for the blending option, we'd have to essentially get a third pipe connection into the treatment plant.
Which would be that ten thousand?
Would be, yeah, somewhere probably around that.
Well, our next meeting would be what, May?
May second.
Well, we have one in the second, but then there's one that's at seventeen, right?
Joint on, uh, yes.
Yeah.
Is that enough time to get samples back or are we looking at?
It, it may be, um, we'll see. Um, it, it depends on the lab, um, the first samples we sent. Um, Northern Lakes, it took about a week and a half to get sample data back once, you know, from the time you mailed it to the time they gave the results back, so.
If we had to wait till June, are we still within sixty days?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, we have five Mondays in May too, so, you know, on the fifth Monday or something, I need a.
Do you have other choices or is that the?
Well, that was who we had used, um, again, through the, with the state paying for these samples, that's gonna go through the state lab in Madison.
State lab down in Madison. Okay. Put our name all over it.
Yeah.
Doesn't get confused. All right. Enough? We beat this to death? Um, let's move on to nine, approve administrator's work plan or authorize start a process to undertake specific projects contained here therein. Strategic plan, comprehensive plan, comprehensive outdoor recreation plan and others.
This really, I guess, again, to address a question from, um, Cussey Hardinger. Um, you know, what is the, does the village have a strategic plan? So, I put a bunch of things up in the cloud drive, kind of related to planning, comprehensive plan materials, um, the, uh, basic parts of the strategic plan that was developed in twenty sixteen. And then also, some stuff related, some materials related, a couple of proposals that have been obtained thus far as we're thinking about potentially, uh, updating our strategic plan. Um, and doing some organizational planning this, this year, uh, probably need to get other proposals, but just to give you some idea of what, what we're considering and needed to really bring to the board yet as well, but I'm not sure what, um, specific discussion you wanted to have on this tonight.
I, I think, um, uh, talking to Jasper a little bit, you know, and, and we were talking about starting a process of a, a plan. And I think the biggest thing is the plan has to, um, kind of be in, in like, as you said before, a broad tilt. So that it can, it can stand the test of elections. Because if it's so wild and the election swings, you know, to whatever way it's gonna swing, if it, if it swings, you know, the board can change it again. And I, I, I think if we can somehow, you know, stay, instead of twenty points, maybe shoot for three. Um, five, I, I don't know, I don't know what you were actually thinking, but I, I, I kind of got that gist from you.
No, I, I agree, Mark. Um, yeah.
Maybe prioritize, you know.
Yeah, 'cause if you look at a comprehensive plan, I mean, usually some, some is done every ten years or so. And that's actually supplemented, I think, by state directives for the most part, what has to be in there. So the strategic plan for the village, um, is just something that I know, I've, I've had a lot of people ask me about. As far as which direction the village is going, why we're doing certain things, what's pushing those initiatives. Um, so, yeah, as far as like a broad stroke, um, something that doesn't have to be, um, too over the top, something that, uh, you know, we can, we can put forth to public and, and have maybe on the, the website to just say, you know, this is the direction that they were taking as a village and this is why we're doing this and this is how we're gonna do it. Based off of our feedback from the public and, and where, how we want to grow the village. Um, and I think, I know there was a lot of discussion last year, you know, uh, over the Tid district and, and how do we, uh, make those improvements in the village, how do we attract people in the village as far as residents, how do we attract developers to the village and what are we doing? And I know there's been a lot of discussion there and what I'm hoping behind having a, a strategic plan is, is gonna help guide that, those discussions and give us a real clear path as far as, um, how we need to go about doing it. And I noticed that you had in here, um, back in two thousand sixteen, uh, there were two proposals from, uh, strategic planning, um, and organizational planning firms.
Those are actually from this year.
It says, uh, last, well, maybe I'm misreading that, but.
Oh, the, so the.
You wanna open that cloud drive, Mike?
It's right.
Oh, it is.
Which one do you want me to open in the cloud?
It's not opening?
It, it is on my screen, I, I can open like the.
Oh, I'm sorry. So there should be two folders in there, some folders, one says, uh, probably Craig Rap and the other one says, uh.
Baker Tilly?
Yeah.
So within those two folders are the, are the proposals from the two firms and then there's also some other samples of what they have done. But the other two documents are, so there's separate PDFs there, one is Village's strategic plugin. And the other was, I think, some information on the comp plan. Yep, they're in there. Yeah, they did a SWOT analysis, um. So is it something that perhaps you'd want, and I, I, I blacked out the costs simply because if we go on and get other proposals, I didn't want the numbers to be, uh, shared at this point.
Do, uh, is this something that the plan commission would need to take up or is it more? Is it more just?
Um, well, I think it would, in the end, if we do something, it would, it would involve the entire, certainly involve all the committees and boards of the village, I would think. Depending on how involved or processed we're doing it. Uh, undertake. I think though, what, what you're suggesting, Jasper, is just doing a more simple review of where we are with this, our, you know, using the, using the materials that we have, like in our comp plan and some of the things we've done, I mean, as far as, if you look at the comp plan, of course, evaluating our facilities is one of them, one of the things that we need to do for capital planning, our capital improvement plan, right, things like that are, are in the current comprehensive plan. They were listed as more detail behind the strategic plan, but I think our strategic plan's over, has a lot of little projects in it and maybe it's a little over, over the top, overwhelming maybe. And I don't know. You know, you'd wanna get together and just kind of go over maybe some other thoughts you might have on that? If that'd be all right?
So what, what I'm kind of hearing is like, less than four would just initially talk for maybe a meeting or two to see where, if, if that's satisfactory.
And even if, if, uh, Keith and I be able to meet, kind of go through some of this, 'cause you were, you were here during when these proposals and everything were, were sent in, right? Oh, yeah, and when these, when the twenty sixteen documents were put together and then, yeah, I sent out, I asked for these two current proposals. I talked with both of them. There were representatives of both of them, but I think, you know, if we, if we want to consider this more, you know, further, we probably would have to get more additional proposals if we're following our, you know, procurement policy like we should. If, if we wanted to go that route.
Go that route.
Right, but, uh, and I, I think maybe that's what Mark was suggesting, is that maybe we just get together take a look at what we have and, and, uh, and get some background on, on your thoughts on. Go from there.
You, you know, and, and, and I, I kind of look at it as just pain points. What are the pain points? You know, what, what do I, what am I, I, I went to a, an award ceremony last night, seventy-five, eighty people there for the EMPD and, uh, the, the pain points that I heard last night were people, uh, most of the comments I got was what's going on with that building? And I, I, I know, I get them, you know, probably as much as anybody else does, but it was surprisingly more from people that I know, you know, uh, from an attorney and his wife, uh, and several others, some retired cops, you know, that everyone here, most of everyone here knows. And honestly, when I said eighty to eighty-five percent of that building is a garage, they laughed. They, they kind of couldn't believe it. And I said, no, I'm, I'm serious. And he goes, well, come on. And I go, no, I'm serious. It's eighty to eighty-five percent of that is a garage. It's, it's to house all the equipment. And I, I'm not defending it or either way here, but I'm, that's just how I answered it. And they just couldn't believe it. Well, it doesn't look like a garage. Well, it is a garage, okay? It's a, it's a pretty garage, whatever you want to call it. It is, it's a nice looking building. It's gonna last for a long, long time. And, uh, it, it just squelched it. So I guess to, to your point, it's a pain point on lack of communication. It's lack of, uh, uh, you know, what I've been talking about for the last maybe month is, um, we've got to have a much more interactive, instead of worrying about all the social media and Nextdoor and Facebook and everything else, whatever he's saying, how about if we advance our website? So that I can get on there and find stuff I need, so that Jasper, as a new, uh, board member realizes that, oh, tourism isn't in finance, you gotta go down to T and find tourism. Which I couldn't find tourism for a long time until I realized it was separate. And to your point, there's no safer minutes in there. Because we can actually find them over at Red Mountain, but it's listed in there, so why aren't the minutes in, is in our agendas? It's all those little teeny maintenance things. And I, and I, and then our website's probably, what, fifteen years old at least, maybe? And it, you know, and change is, is everybody's middle name. And I mean, it's just not hip. It's gotta be hip. And I'm certainly not hip, but I mean, we could, I, I just think we could have a much, we don't need to be a governmental website. Why aren't we something that's kind of wild, maybe have a little question and answer thing there, maybe some new information points? Yeah, it might take a bit. But if it's something that draws people there, you know, that whole thing on Schofield Avenue, boy, it was, as, as much as stubborn our toe, I, I can now talk to ten people on Schofield Avenue that I never knew and I can walk in there and start talking because that's the relationship I have now. So what do we do? We put a simple poll out there, staff does, Nate, whoever did it, on where is this? Where's McDonald's? Where is this? Where's that? Where's that? What'd you have, two to three hundred people respond? Yeah, it was like a challenger or more, was it?
I don't know the exact number, but it was.
It was way over what we thought and people wanted to know where certain things were, so. I, I just look at it, what's the, what are the things that we need to fix? What are the things that we hear about all the time? Not maybe things that we don't hear about, but we think we have to fix them. And it's normally from the public. It's from the public or the business owners that have questions or are wondering why. And those, those answers should be out there.
Is that something that each of the board members wants to, you know, to, to three of their top things? I mean, we know the website. We talk about the website thing. Be nice to bring in a, somebody that can help us. I guess we can bring an intern or something too.
Well, you need to bring in a twelve-year-old.
Yeah.
You know, with spiked hair and, and a high-top tennies and an energy drink that can seriously relate to this. We, we don't want to build something for the next year. We want to build something that draws people in and, you know, maybe while they're in school, they can research stuff and I used to love getting into the county, the county website. It was so easy to go in there and, and look at home values under taxes and stuff, and it made it so damn hard. You know, it's, it's just not the way it used to be. Now you gotta go in and accept this and accept that and I like looking to see what homes are on tax value, what, what they're currently appraised at versus what the real estate is trying to do. Uh, and another one is case simple search. That used to be really easy. You're not kind of supposed to use it if you're hiring, but people look in there and, uh, and now you gotta go through three or four other, you know, I accept, I'm not going to this, that, you know. I don't know. I, I just think things are gonna be simpler, yeah.
So who, who controls the website now?
I would say Nate.
In the past, yeah.
When's the last time you had an energy drinks, Nate?
Oh, it's been a while.
Yeah, see, see? So I don't know, you gotta, you gotta bring in a bunch of fourteen-year-olds and, you know, have a session.
Currently, my role on the website was always, when we did design, it was ten years ago. Was doing the RFP and bringing people in. Content is mostly about all departments managing the content. Um, I kind of, I, I manage the, the backend, so to say, since to make sure it works and people can get to it. But, uh, yeah, I think we've, as staff, we've talked about, just also probably struggle with content monitoring, monitoring, just we have a lot of other things we're trying to get done, I think.
Yeah.
We, uh.
And, and see, and that's, I, I think I've had the same drumbeat for quite a while. I just, I wouldn't look, and I know you are, you know, look at that and see a lot of that. I just don't pay attention. It, and they can call me, they can email me, they can visit my house, I don't care. But there is no way I'm gonna read something on Facebook or Nextdoor. Not, not a, not a chance will I do that. I won't do it. Be, because there's just too many other ways that are simpler than to go out there and just the hell out of somebody somewhat anonymously, so I just want to spend our time on that.
But after of an idea maybe, Nate?
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure you, you probably get input from staff and people that try to navigate the site and even probably us. Can we put something on the next agenda?
Yeah.
They have.
I think that's a great idea.
Can you give us a, a presentation on possible improvements or, or what it might cost or, you know, even something, I mean, I don't know, uh, how much of that, that site you own, if you're able to write code and pages or just your designs or?
No, it's quite, I mean, we can do quite a bit.
We only, pretty much all of them.
Right, I mean, we, we pay a, a maintenance fee every year.
Right, yep. So you don't make it and everything?
Cause I didn't.
Right.
Citix Plus?
Citix Plus, okay.
So, I see your comment, you, you did say we all, I mean, Citix Plus is a, they specialize in got one websites.
Yep, that's probably, that's probably the problem right there. That's probably the problem. We, we need to find somebody that does, uh, that used to do East Bay, not Foot Locker, East Bay, you know, something like that, that's got energy and, and, you know, maybe, maybe it might take some research to look at fifty other governmental websites, you know, to see which ones sparked the interest. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking, I'm just bit falling. So, just a thought.
Would it be good to have like something more interactive, like a Q and A or?
Would it be good to have like something more interactive, like a Q and A or like chat or, you know. So we're not dealing with Facebook or social media or something that goes, you know, right to?
I'd rather see those things logged on our site.
Right.
Than to find them on six or seven, and then tomorrow there might be three more, you know, so. You know, we're chasing all these other deals where, you know, if we're offering one more spot that they can put something in easily. You know, or call us, or email us, or text us, you know. But, but the chase, you know, Facebook and, I don't know, Twitter, can you even do it on Twitter? What is Twitter, like fifteen seconds or something? I have no idea. So.
There's a lot of solutions out there.
Yeah. But are there, are they solutions or are they profit centers? I would believe that most of them are profit centers. And our website is not a profit center. But I, I believe Facebook is, I believe Twitter is, I believe Nextdoor is. Everything has advertising and has dollars, otherwise they wouldn't do it.
No, sure, I was gonna say like there's all those like called C-click Fix, ones that, you know. That's not, you aren't the customer, I mean, you're the product. It's free, you're the product. There's other ones that we would have to pay for. Provide things like that.
Maybe just start with putting together five suggestions for what we do to improve our site based off of other sites that you might have taken a look at? Yeah, I think we should start from there.
I didn't mean to change, I mean, I feel like I changed the whole course here when it's really was your question, so.
Well, it's among the things that we know, as you say, it's a, what'd you call it, pinch point?
No, a pain point.
Pain point, I'm sorry. Pain point.
And why I say pain point is because it, it seems to have gotten us a lot of, in what I do otherwise than this. Is when you go to a grocery store or a chain of grocery stores and you ask them, what are your pain points? Well, obviously right now it's labor. But when you start hearing pain points from retailers or from any other industry. That's, that's exactly where you go to, to attack it. And then that's how you get more business. And when, when you can change your company to fit, to fix their pain points. So if we, if we take away the pain points of our taxpayers, the residents, our bosses, and we answer them, you know, better. It's going to be less for us, you know, less for staff. And the whole feeling is going to feel better. That's just my thought.
When was the, when was the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan and the utility master plan last updated? I know we just did Weston Avenue.
The corp, the corp plan was done, adopted in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And then it got put into the comp plan when we did the comp plan. That's why it's off right now.
Okay, so does that need to be updated as well then?
Yeah, so once we do the corp, the corp is actually a piece of, it's the, it takes care of the, the parks and rec portion of the comprehensive plan. So that we weren't, I mean, they needed to be the same, so that got inserted. The corridor plans have been done after the comprehensive plan went, the last one was Schofield, which would have been twenty, I believe.
Okay, what about that? And then I think the utility master plan was just done recently too, is that correct?
Yeah, the sanitary sewer master plan was last updated in October of twenty nineteen. The water one was twenty twenty. And we're actually in the process of finalizing a stormwater master plan. Due to the D N I requirements for the Wisconsin River T M D L for phosphorus loading for stormwater. So, and the, so there, I guess the goal moving forward with those two is to, you know, probably look at them at least every five years. Just to make sure we're still on course and not, you know, going one way when, you know, development is now over here and we thought it was going to go over there, so.
Sure.
We've got a good start? Does everyone kind of think? I, I think we start, you know, more intimately with a couple meetings and just to see if we're going to get where we want, where we think we need to go and go from there, right? And then put it on, who said something about putting something on the next agenda? You?
Jasper.
Jasper.
Yeah.
And then I, I just don't want to forget this now that I'm thinking about it. We took care of some business in the beginning of our last cycle, two years ago, in closed session. On a member of the board being able to do something, well, say in an open session, you know, kind of. For protection, okay, and if that could be put on the next agenda too, in a closed session.
I think, I think. Next regular meeting agenda?
Oh, yeah, whenever, yeah.
Or the Monday meeting.
I just don't want to forget about it, so.
This one, we, you could put it on Monday, we have a special, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is that agenda finalized or can it be?
It's a joint with H R and B O T.
It's a draft right now.
So, yeah, we, we actually could just do it, let's put it on Monday and just have a closed session. It'll take us three minutes at the most, so. I mean, you, you got it or not?
I'm going to turn it on.
Yeah, okay. Okay, okay. How about the three, you're not kind of new, but you two, I mean, any other questions you had in your first meeting? All what you thought it would be, are you glad you made your decision, you know, all that kind of stuff?
And this might be, how do we go, so we have, we just redid the Schofield Avenue, Weston Avenue plan. So, for example, Schofield Ave, if there was something that's, that we put in that plan that we wanted to pursue getting done, how do we go about doing that, I guess?
Well, that's our next step. It will be implementation out of those plans. So part of it is we needed to get those order plans done because we need to update the future land use maps. Because Plan Commission looked at the land uses, the future land uses, those are different than what our future land use map says right now. So we have to do some updating of the comprehensive plan in those areas. We're also looking at the housing section because we're part of that metro housing study that's going to be moving forward. But we also need to look at the housing section because when that was done in twenty sixteen. The board had a different idea about multifamily housing, so. We need to look at that section because the mindset has changed quite a bit from, from when we were doing that.
Okay.
How's it changed?
Of our current board?
Originally, they was, they were not going to do any like apartments, anything like that. There was no rezones to that. They were very strong against it. Whatever was zoned that way was zoned that way. Right now, we need to kind of look at affordability of housing and different housing choices and things like that. That wasn't a real strong, they didn't really look at that. It was more single family mindset back then.
You know, that's actually a pretty good question that, or a point that you bring up is, I know we've got a couple of multifamily, some larger units that have gone up. Schofield Ave here. And one of the questions that, whatever it is popped in my head, meeting a few months ago was pushing for zoning and. And whether or not we're going to go towards single family or multifamily or, as a community. Which one, we're kind of emphasis along like the larger corridors here?
The state was, so the state initiative has been affordable housing, workforce housing. So there were some, there was some legislation coming forward that was going to make us have to do things in some of the districts.
Okay.
That's all kind of fallen on the wayside right now.
So now it's more up to us?
It could come back. They're not going to force us to, to do it. It wasn't going to really affect us too much. It was more of the smaller communities that their zoning was never going to allow sixteen, thirty-unit housing.
Yeah.
Complex in their zoning district, in their business community. And some of it for us, we wouldn't want them to put that in industrial park, you know, some of that kind of stuff, looking at it that way. But right now, that's kind of all fallen on the wayside, so.
As far as like our capacity in the area here, what, the ones that we have up now, are these something that's maxed out? Is that something that we need to think about having more of those types of multifamily units or is it something?
I think it's going to come out of this group. So last year, the board authorized us to work with the other metro communities. The RPC is going to be leading, and I just met with them last week. They had some changeover staff, so it got behind. But they're on track now to have something adopted for the metro area at the end of December. And so they're going to start some, doing some focus group type things, stakeholder meetings with builders, realtors, just to kind of get an idea. Because when someone says affordable housing, I mean, no one really can say what that is. And what the housing needs are actually in, in the different communities. So like the city of Wausau's involved, Red Mountain's involved. There's some communities that, like Red Mountain does not have a whole lot of any kind of apartments. And there's just scattered in there.
And they believe, I mean, and I'm not saying this behind their back, they, they want single family. I mean, I've talked, I've talked to current board members and that, that's just what they're going for. So, you know, we have a tremendous amount of growth coming here in the next, I think, twenty-five years.
Yeah.
For Marathon County, so.
Some of it is, is because we have a diverse housing stock and I'll get those numbers out too, because they just gave us, they're kind of tweaking them yet. Because I know some of our stuff was wrong with our zoning. They said we didn't have a planned unit development and we do now. So I'm not sure exactly when they started collecting that data. But you can see the different housing stock that they're, you know, trying to collect in all the different communities. What they're having a problem with is finding those that are more of the low or the subsidized housing. And they're not sure how to get those numbers and get a realistic picture of them. So they were kind of asking us questions on if we knew. Really, the city of Wausau is the only one that has a housing authority right now. So, you know, they, they kind of know where theirs are, but they even struggle with that. But, yeah, the numbers are really interesting and you'll start seeing that. They'll have, they said they're going to have, one of the, like, open houses will be in this side of the metro area. It'll either be here or in Rothschild most likely. They just haven't decided on. But they were going to have three different meetings that the public can come to and kind of ask questions or give input on that. So that'll be coming up now, going forward this summer.
Is that an outside group or is that coming through the county or?
So the North Central Regional Planning Commission is kind of a state planning group. That, the, the boundaries are set by the state, but they are actually doing it on behalf of the county. The county is a member of it. They break them into regions, so it's kind of a big region. It goes all the way up.
And what are, what'd you call it again?
North?
North Central Region.
And then when you said RPC before?
Yeah, Regional Planning Commission.
Regional, okay.
So there's regional planning commissions all over the state. A lot of times they do planning projects. Well, they're actually the ones that are doing the bounce back program for the state. So they, they administer a lot of grants, things like that.
You know, it isn't just single family and, you know, apart, you know, how it was the mindset twenty, thirty years ago. I, I think people live different. There's more transient people. There's more people that don't want all the yard work and all the upkeep or the taxes. You know, so it's not just affordable and then single family, so. And we've got a few people that tried to do some low affordable, like four hundred dollar range stuff. And I just saw some signs the last couple of weeks and it's being advertised at seven ninety-nine. They couldn't make it go. And, you know, this, this one out here at East Gate that went up, I mean, I got ten neighbors that called me just screaming, bloody murder. And it's affordable housing, oh my God, you know, how can you do this to us? And I'm going, you just wait to see what this is. And I think that thing starts at eleven hundred dollars, right?
It's twelve.
It's, it's like, what?
It's twelve.
Yeah, twelve. I know several people that are in and out. So if you call it affordable, holy mackerel.
Affordable though is, it's, it's individual specific. What I think is affordable is totally different than that someone else.
I mean, you can get into a house, you know, for six hundred bucks, you know, so.
Square footage, just like ranch.
If you can find one. I know, I know, you know.
They're really nice.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. I, I saw that one in seven single family homes in the U S is now owned by a hedge fund. So good luck getting into one.
Yep. So Jennifer, they're just kind of updating you as they, they press through it, but they have until the end of the year, basically?
Well, we had our, just our first initial meeting because they just got their new staff member, so. He just kind of gave us the information and said, take a look at it, let me know where I've got stuff wrong. And then they're going to schedule another meeting.
But they're really not going to have a whole lot for you till the end of the year or they're just?
Well, you guys will have a plan or some type of a document to look at and approve towards the end of the year. That's when they'll have like a document, but they'll have the different focus meetings. We'll see probably a draft in early fall. They're just on data collection right now, trying to get the information.
The forecast, that, that study that was done, the housing planner, I can't remember how, the verbiage for it. But wasn't it like twenty-five years, fifty percent of the growth would be in the village of Weston?
Marathon County.
For Marathon County, so if you take Marathon County for the next twenty-five years, the growth of Marathon County, fifty percent is here or twenty-five, what?
I don't remember the exact.
It was a lot, it was a huge, it was a big number, it was the biggest number by far.
It was at least, I think it was fifty percent of the growth in the whole county.
Yeah, it's going to be here. That's pretty cool. So, I mean, whichever way you want to look at it, so. Anyway. When I say anyway, it's a tick. My attention span is done. And I didn't realize my wife knew it like four years before she told me that she knew I had a tick, so. So when I say anyway, that's, we're done. All right. Enough on that or more? So are we adding a little bit for Monday?
I think in here, you said approve administrative work plan.
Well, I.
I think those were ideas.
Part of it is the, is the website, we want to see something, we want to do a better job of communication. We talked about it internally, I guess we need to make some progress on that. I think we do need to go ahead with the corp plan approval or update, I should say.
Sounds like that's kind of like the last puzzle piece for the comp plan, right?
Well, his is imperative just because if we want to apply for any kind of grant funding, he has to.
Right.
It has to be looked at.
Sure.
So Nate's going to do the update?
So we would just bring.
Hire it out.
I'm sorry?
You're going to hire it out, hire somebody from outside to do it or?
I think that's to be determined. I think we are going to need some outside help, I really do, but. We need to bring some thoughts back to you, I guess, and how that'll work.
Okay.
On the corp plan, I guess we would get proposals. I don't know what the cost of the update would be. If it's over the ten thousand dollar threshold, I guess we're going to fund that out of our general, out of our regular operations, I don't know. I would think. If we were planning to use our money, then we might have to follow that procurement policy closely, but. I think the expectation would be to get a couple of proposals on it, maybe. So I don't know if there's any approvals needed on that, I guess, unless, unless you want to.
I don't, I was taking a discussion, you know, and, and I just see where we're going here a little bit. I mean, it kind of got spurred a little bit with some of your questions, so.
But I think just with the board's approval, if Keith and I can sit down and. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't see the, the cloud link. I got the comprehensive off there. I didn't see the cloud link with the previous proposal, so. I think what might just be helpful is if I get a chance to digest a little bit of that and if everybody's all right with it, if you and I get a chance to meet and anybody else that might want to be a part of that meeting. I think we just, if we're involving more than, probably just one, probably just be single board members. Just to kind of follow open meetings laws, you know, so.
You can include me whenever you want, but you will definitely double your meeting time if I come. I will talk that much.
Well, and just, yeah, I'm okay with me with Keith.
I think just you two, yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah, talk about some stuff, yeah.
You're, you're head of H R, that's your legitimate prerogative.
Yeah. And Nate, I, I think if we start, like, well, any of us can start researching some websites and, you know, just seeing what we're looking for. I, I don't think it has to look like anyone else's government website, it can be. So we want something that draws them in, so.
So for the, the next meeting then, so by, between now and then, just let me know. If you want to send me a, a couple of openings in your, your schedule, like, I would say at, at least sixty minutes. I don't want to keep it much longer than that, but just to go through the past of it and what you feel the. Probably the, the pain points, to use your word, Mark. You guys and staff and, and previous members here. pain points, to use your word, Mark, you guys and staff and, and previous members here. That you've, you've, you witnessed what would be the best thing to kind of put in the broad strokes in the front. I mean, and even something as, as, as simple as, as infographic outlining the broad strokes, might be something to start looking for, looking to develop and then move off from there. Something just really is gonna relate to the public.
And then, and I'm just, just a little housekeeping, but like Tuesday, normally Tuesday mornings at nine, right? You have a department head meeting?
Ten.
Or ten is now?
Since we have a meeting, since we have a project meeting at eight, we moved it.
To ten, okay. And, I mean, I, I've come the, I think one or two, I know, I thought Nate did, I think he did, I don't know who else has ever, you know, you, you kind of know all the stuff that goes on here, all the different roles. But for the three, you know, you, you know, you're welcome to call directors, one on one or whatever to, to get more, you know, just to understand more what's going on, so, you know. Yeah. Good. Anything else?
I'd like to observe the, the water test on the.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I'll, I'll let you know exactly when.
Okay.
Get them in.
So we covered all of this? Yep.
We've covered it well enough?
I think so.
Okay.
And we'll bring it back. So we have a meeting next, well, on Monday, let's do, let's do remarks first, eh? So remarks from trustees, Nate, wanna start us off?
Uh, just like to welcome our, our new three colleagues and I look forward to getting to work with all of you the next year.
Barb?
The same.
Good.
It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah. Oh, Shane?
Thank you to see your interest in the water. And because we got other problems besides P F O S. We got the manganese and iron, which has cost us a lot of money, cost the business a lot of money. So I think in order to treat the P F O S, I think we have to take a manganese and iron out of it also. They can't do it, so. But again, thank you for thinking about it.
Thanks, Rashane.
Nice to have you.
I'm just excited to be here.
Yeah? What, what do they call it, third time of charm or something?
Yeah, sure.
So I gave, I gave a little bit of advice to third time, I said, just be quiet. Just be quiet and see what happens.
I'm excited to be here. Yeah, I'm looking forward to some good changes.
Very excited to be here.
We'll see how that goes in a couple of months. No, I'm just kidding. Just a little bit of humor. I don't have much either, uh, welcome, like Nate said too, and I just think it's interesting. I, I think sometimes you come in, you know, I certainly did. I think all three times I came in with a head of steam. And then you realize what's going on. I mean, as a town supervisor, you know, Barb was our clerk and, you know, I saw one of our board members sleeping, you know, often and, you know. And one time he fell off his chair, you know, he slid backwards. What?
That wasn't.
I know, I, but I was being nice. Anyway, so myself, I used to be in a liquor store at Twenty Nine Super and Bob Stavron used to be a teacher. And as, as opposite as we were, you know, we ran and got in and, and then I got off and then back on again. I, I don't know what, I don't think I had a mission the second time. Anyway, so I, I just, I like it. I, I, it's exciting, I enjoy it and, yeah, it's good stuff.
I have one thing to add.
You can't, you can't, once we're past remarks, you can't.
Thanks, fine.
Go ahead, I'll talk to you. Go ahead.
Are we gonna get, I know we get meeting notices for all the village committees, am I gonna get one for Safer? Is there an email listing?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You will, you'll get that from Safer Administration.
Okay.
And it's, it's not Char, it's Cher.
Cher.
C H A R, but it's pronounced like Cher, like it's not named Cher. Who's like, what, seventy five and still on stage, so, too wild. Yep. Oh, yeah.
Give us the mission statement that you've been talking about.
Yeah, is that, did we all have one of these on purpose?
That was just the, you know, front page of the strategic plan, it's actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask the same question.
At some point, I guess, we always should decide it, that's still our, what we agree is our mission statement.
In favor of the first one, the second one.
Yeah. That's a good point, you know, something that's maybe not stuffy. I still like the mission statement. I was on a tour with Jen one time, Little Shute had that. I still have it in my phone.
Yeah, I have it in.
Yeah. It just, you know, something that sticks with you a little bit.
Yeah, this is pretty wordy.
Yeah, well, you know, you want to see wordy, go to the county. Oh, holy mackerel. I sat there for eight hours and I, I had blood coming out of my ears, I was so done. But, but they had a good lunch, holy crap, the lunch was excellent, so. Um, all right, so next meeting is May second. It's the joint with Human Resource. Five o'clock start and then our, then it follows on every third, you know, so. Got a couple groups of meetings, so on the second Monday, it's Public Works and now Park and then Planning. And then the third Monday is Finance, Tourism and Board, yeah.
Don't want time with the park and?
Um, I think we're gonna start it at four fifteen, Public, you know, excuse me, yeah, Public Works and then Park after and then see where it goes. See where it goes. I think that'll be good.
Move to adjourn?
Uh, motion to adjourn, second, second by Cronin. On the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thank you. That'll get you.